Okay, and we're live. Well, not really live, but we're recording. How you doing today, Michael?
I'm excellent. How are you doing, David?
I'm doing great. It is a beautiful day out. Haven't really been outside to enjoy the weather, but I'm hoping to be able to do so later.
I hope so, because like I was telling you, it's uh, it was really cold yesterday, like last night and I opened the door and I'm like, is it winter again? We're in fake spring is where we're at.
It's a good old Michigan weather for you. Yeah. Um, now, so you're running for city council here in Lansing. Tell me why you want to do that?
Well,
Or actually first, let's get back, let's get into your story a little bit. Tell me a little bit about yourself. Are you from Lansing? And how did you get into running for this position?
Right. So um, I'm not from Lansing originally. So born and raised in Holland. Last name Bandaguchi, strong Dutch name. It usually gives it away, west side. And then my father is actually a corporate pilot and my mother's a nurse. So he had to move to the Detroit area. He flew out of Willa Run in Ypsilanti, actually. So when I was in sixth grade, we actually moved out there. And we lived in Canton and I went through my middle school and high school career there. And then I ended up actually going to Michigan State University and I got my, excuse me, my bachelor's of science in fisheries and wildlife with a concentration in conservation biology and a minor in conservation, recreation, environmental enforcement.
Whoa.
So pretty much I wanted to be DNR, right? Conservation officer. So I graduated 2017. I had been living in Lansing. Once I got out of the dorm sophomore year, so that would have been 2013, 14, something like that. So out of the 10 years that I've been in Lansing, six of them have been in Ward one and the rest were in Ward two.
Where is Ward one at?
So Ward one is anything east of the river in MLK, north of the zoo, and then you actually live in Ward two.
Okay.
So it's everything.
That's actually good to know.
You can actually look online. If you Google, where do I live in Lansing? It'll bring up all four of the wards right there. For anyone that's curious.
Okay, interesting.
And it can kind of, you can zoom in too. I guess you can see your precinct and everything as well. So. So anyways, um, I lived in Trappers Cove with Brooke for a couple of years and that's technically Ward two. And now we live off of Leslie, right off of Michigan Ave there. And we've been in that house since 2020, right?
Oh, right during the pandemic.
Yeah, we moved in and it was actually, her father was the landlord for it. So we moved in and then ended up changing hands and now it's my campaign manager's property. He was, he's an old friend of my fiance and he uh, he grad, or he went to MSU as well for law. So yeah, that's kind of my backstory. I've, I don't like to say I'm from any particular area, right? Cause I'm kind of being across all the whole map of Michigan and then I've, I've been a Michigander my whole life. I love the state so much. And I ended up, I've probably been pretty much every state park, especially being in fisheries and wildlife and everything. Know all the wildlife, right?
So are you currently a DNR officer?
I am not, no.
What do you do currently?
So what uh, what happened with that is I actually was going to other states after I graduated. And I actually broke my ankle in South Carolina, the day before an interview for the South. Yeah, I made it to like the top 50 in Georgia for conservation officers and I got cut. And I was in much better physical shape at that point. But um, no, so after I broke my ankle, I was like, well, what am I gonna do? This is gonna take a couple of weeks. I actually took a position as a security officer at Sparrow. And I think that's pretty important because that kind of started that physical security career for me. And what I saw and what I've experienced there has really, it really opened my eyes to like what the real world is like, right? And I saw some of the things that some of our Lansing residents are going through and it's um, it's sad. It's sad to see instead and
What kind of, what kind of things did you experience and see?
It's hard to talk about and a lot of the security officers would agree, I'm sure. You know, when you're hospital security, part of your job is to ensure that people that might not be fully mentally capable, whether it's short term or long term, stay where they're supposed to be. And we would, you know, have to intervene if things were going south. Up to restraining people, right? And it's for their safety. It's for their medical benefit. But it really, and a lot of it was mental health, right? I mean, there was drugs, there was alcohol, things like that, but we would see a lot of mental health. And they're not getting the proper care and that really just tore me up a lot.
They're not getting the proper care from the hospital or just?
Just in general. Yeah. I mean, there's just not good programs out there, right? It's, it's uh, who can we turf this person off to next? And then how can we get them out as quickly as possible? And if you can't get them to a specialized facility, some people end up getting stuck for literally weeks. And that's not fair either, right? So yeah, I don't want to get too much into it. It's, it is a tough topic for me. I left because of it. I had people that were younger than me having like career ending injuries and stuff.
From having to.
So um, I actually left, took a couple of months, tried to figure out what I wanted to do and I actually started working at Meyer. And so now I work for Meyer. I started out as a store detective. Which is literally apprehending shoplifters. And that's pretty much exclusively what I did. I've now been promoted within the past two, yeah, two years. I've worked at the Birch Run store. I've worked at the Schwartz Creek store and now I work at the East Lansing store as an asset protection team leader. And so I don't focus so much on the shoplifters anymore. I do more of the back room, kind of find loss. Coke will say they're gonna send us $10,000 a product. We only get 8,000. I gotta find that kind of stuff.
That's interesting. I didn't know that they had something, somebody that did that.
Yes. Um, yeah, uh, you know, shoplifting is definitely on the rise right now, especially with how the economy is. And you know, no ill will towards anybody. I get it, but everyone's got a job to do and
That's your job.
That's what I get paid to do. So I try to be cool with everybody, you know? I'm like, listen, man, come on. It's not, not a big deal, right? We can just talk about it and most of them.
I witnessed somebody stealing a TV once from the Lake Lansing Meyer.
Did you?
Yeah, that was a couple of years ago. That was, that was wild. It was like in the middle of the night. And uh, I was on second shift. I went there for, I think for some steaks. And somebody threw a TV on a cart and they're running outside, threw it in their vehicle and then sped off. I was like, holy cow, that person just stole a TV.
Yep. Yeah, it happens. It's, it's crazier than you'd think. I mean, there's people that push out entire cartfuls of stuff. Yeah. And I mean, like overflowing. And if you go to the South Penn Meyer, you'll see there's actually locks on the carts now and stuff. And that's something that they'll be implementing for most of the minor stores here.
Locks on the carts?
Yeah. So if you don't go through like particular checkpoints, I guess you could call it, through either a manned lane or a self checkout. If you just try to go right out the door, the cartwheel will lock.
Oh my gosh, that is sweet.
Yeah. So wow, it's, it's, and a lot of companies are starting to move towards things like that. So it's definitely an interesting. I guess you could call it like a, a side that people don't normally see.
Right.
With retail, right?
Yeah. Well, I mean, if you're a store owner, it's important to make sure that you're gonna make the most money possible.
Right.
I mean, you're not there so people can just rob from you.
Right. And everyone, every company has their own tactics.
Right.
So
That's it. I've never thought about that. That's a smart move.
Yeah.
Lock up the tires.
Yeah, it's pretty crazy. So that'll be coming to pretty much every store soon. So I'll let you know now, if you're ever shopping and it locks on you, don't freak out. You're probably okay. Steaks happen.
That's funny. Now, what, what made you decide that you wanted to run for city council?
So that's a really good question. I would say my biggest thing was actually the Michigan State shooting. So I um, I've always toyed in my head with the idea of politics. And when I, when that occurred, especially being an alum and everything, I, I don't know, it just hit me different, right? And so I was talking to my mother and she felt really bad because she was like, well, you were my son. You went there and I can only imagine how other mothers feel right now, right? And she said, you know, you need to be the change in the world that you wanna see. And I don't know, something about that just kind of struck me pretty deep at that moment. And then my buddy, who's actually my treasurer now, got on his zoning and planning commission in Diamonddale. And I was like, oh, I said, well, that would be an easy way to kind of get your foot in the door, doing something like that. So I started looking up what I could do in Lansing, thinking I would just do something like that, get on some sort of a commission or whatever. And that's when I saw this whole debacle for Ward one, how um, the original candidate that held the position had some things going on. And I guess his wife said some not so nice things on social media. He ended up stepping down two years into his four year term. Yeah. Brian Daniels then took it over last year as an appointment from the council. Local business owner, US Marine, I mean, great guy, right? And so then they had to do a special election last year for Ward one to fill in for whoever would take this final year of that four year term. And so the current incumbent Ryan Coast, Cost, one of the two, I think it's Coast actually, ended up beating Brian by 56 votes. And so I was like, wow. First off, that's a really close election, right? It was close to 4,000 votes total for the Ward one section. And I thought to myself, well, if you were ever gonna get into something like that, it would be probably best to do it with someone that's only gonna have one year experience, right? Not a entrenched incumbent displacing people, right? So I started looking into Ryan and kind of what he stood for and everything like that. And that's kind of when I decided that I don't necessarily agree with the approach that he takes. And uh, I spoke to Brian Daniels and I asked if he was going to run again, and this was probably, you know, late February. And he informed me no, before he ever told anybody else. And then probably a week after I spoke to Brian, it's when I uh, signed the paperwork, paid the hundred dollar filing fee and I was like, oh, I guess I'm doing this. And you know, what's really crazy is I've told so many people, right? Family, friends, even acquaintances. Not a single person has told me you can't do that, or you shouldn't do that. You know what I mean? And I'm like, wow, I wonder if people actually think that I should be in a position like this. So I'm new to it all. I don't have any kind of a manager, like a professional managing service or anything. We're, we're kind of flying by the seat of our pants here.
Well, I think that's important though. Like I think that's one thing a lot of people don't like about politicians is the fact that they've had experience. They know like what the game is, right? They know, they, they just want to be in the position.
Right.
They want a position of power or they want to find a way to get into a position so they could continuously move up.
Right.
And that's a problem.
Yeah, I would agree.
You look at like some of the most extensive or some of the biggest positions, like president, like people don't want these people that have these political careers because then they have generally, they, they just want like the power. They just want power or they, they want to, I don't know. I don't know. It's just something that I guess I've kind of witnessed. Like being, being in a union where there's positions that you have to vote for, people who are elected, these people just want to find their way up.
Yeah.
In the system.
I would agree with you. And you can see some, you know, there's certain politicians, if you really dig into their like history, they do some shady stuff, right? They move their residences.
Yeah, almost every politician.
Right. Just, just so they can move on and give something different, right? They're making deals 10 years prior to ensure that they, if they were like a house representative, that they get voted in as a senator, right?
I didn't know that Alyssa Slotkin, she isn't a resident of Ingham County. Or was it, was it Ingham County that she was represented? Representing? Yeah, she didn't live here.
Nope.
She had like an apartment or whatever.
Yep.
I was like, wow.
It's pretty crazy that people that represent us don't live in our communities anymore.
Yeah, it's crazy.
It is. And I'm, I, I don't know. I, I think Meyer has done a really good job with me because they're all about community, right? Family. They've always preached that the whole time that they've been a part of Michigan. And to me, it's so important to be a part of the community. And I'll, I'll be the first to admit, like, I wasn't a huge part of Lansing's community. I, I'm not at any committees. I don't go and clean up the park on a Saturday, right? But that doesn't mean that I didn't care. And I feel like I was actually serving my community in other ways, especially being a security officer at Sparrow and everything like that. And I cared about those people on a different level, right? It wasn't just like, all right, you're here, whatever. Like, no, like I understand, like you live right down the road and you need help today. So I've always, I've always had that longing, public service, right? Helping other people. And I probably get that from my mother. My, my brother is a paramedic. My mother's a nurse. So
I mean, yeah, I, I completely get what you're saying with living in a community and not really doing much. Cause that's one thing that I've lived in Lansing for a while now. But until I started doing this podcast, I never did anything for the community. Like I was just like, I just live here.
Exactly.
But I feel like, like doing something like this is a huge service for, for the community as well.
Absolutely.
Now, you, you had mentioned that working at Sparrow, you witnessed all these different lifestyles, all these different people that you came across. What would you do to help those kind of people? The people that you witnessed?
Well, one of the biggest things is I really feel like we need better mental health programs, right? And especially being the capital city of Michigan. We could really be, I don't want to say it like this, but I'm gonna have to, kind of like a testing ground, right? So we have the capability to implement different programs that would assist people that are in mental health crisis. And one of those things I think would be possibly introducing social workers with police officers. So East Lansing has actually been doing that for probably, I'd say six months now. And it seems to be going over pretty well, actually.
I know Lansing had that too. But they, I think the, so I, when I had Andy Shore on the podcast, he talked about how they were just introducing the social worker. And then like six months later, she, she like quit because she was like, this is too much.
Right. So I'm not saying it wouldn't take a special type of person.
No, it definitely does. Yeah.
But having that secondary outlet, right? So instead of, well, as a police officer, I can either take you to jail, tell you to leave, or maybe take you somewhere else, right? Those social workers are just a lot more in tuned with what programs are available for people. And I mean, let's be real, there's so many Michigan state run federally run and even locally run programs and they're all different, right? So having someone that actually knows what those are, knows what they can offer those types of people would be really important. But a verse from that. So the Fledge, have you heard of them?
Yep.
So they're actually right behind Sparrow kitty corner from the professional building. And they've been having once a month, mental health awareness meetings.
Through the month of May?
No, actually, like they've started it.
Every month?
Every month. Yeah. I think it's like the third Tuesday of every month or something. Third Thursday. And so if you're in crisis or if you are struggling with your mental health, they actually have counselors show up there. And they have all those programs available and you can come and you can talk.
Who's paying for this?
They, they are. They, I think they survive off of donations. And that's what's kind of crazy to me, right? I mean, they, they just shut them down as a warming center.
Yeah, what, whatever came of that, do you know?
I guess they found the money in the budget. That's kind of what this whole veto thing that's going on right now is all about. Is they, they shut them down because they needed a special use permit, right? Which, I don't want to get into that. That's kind of ridiculous. Like, we should have a place where people can go to be warm if they're homeless. But anyways, they ended up finding the money. I think they're talking like 335,000, I think is the number that I found.
Holy cow.
Yeah.
For that license.
Yeah.
Permit.
Yeah. But the city council is gonna pretty much give them the money so that they can have it. And it's not just a warming center. It's also a cooling center when it's super hot outside. So you know, Sparrow Hospital used to offer something like that and then it was taken away from them.
Really?
Yes. They just, I don't know. And that's what's difficult, right? Is I don't know if anyone has the, the correct answers. But I just know that if there are people that want to move that direction, that especially like me, you know, I would find different ways. I would, uh, cause I come from a science background, right? So I would look at case studies. I would see what other cities are doing, right? I mean, there's so many, so much opportunity in the US for mental health. Especially when you compare us to other countries like the UK, Canada, right? But we don't have to go the route that they do where they end up like stripping rights away from people. Cause in the UK, pretty much three people say you're going through a crisis. They can just take you to the mental hospital.
Yeah, that's wild.
It is, isn't it?
Yeah.
So we don't, I'm not calling for anything like that, but just extra steps. Yeah. Cause I know there's people out there that want help and I know there's people that are suffering. So.
So mental health would be one of the big, big things for you?
It's probably, I would say third.
Okay.
On my list for sure.
So what's the first?
Raising the economy. So we're going through a tough time right now as a country, right? With our economy and everything like that. And so my goal would be to basically make Lansing depression proof as much as possible. And one of the best ways to do that is to have this really fine line balance of big business and small businesses. And them working together in order to ensure their survival. So um, the first thing I thought of when I signed the paper was everyone wants to see the programs that I just talked about, right? Like, I don't think anyone would be like, oh, Mike's crazy for wanting that. But we need money and we don't, we don't have any money. Cause nobody has any money. We just run off of deficiences because that's what we do. So in my head, I was like, well, if we make Lansing a place for business, we're gonna boost the economy and by bolstering the economy, we're gonna get more money in return. And then I was thinking, you know, nobody ever says they want to come to Lansing if they're traveling, right? Like people from Ohio, Illinois, Kentucky, whatever, Pennsylvania. They never go, oh yeah, let's stop in Lansing. No, they're going to Detroit. They're going to Traverse City. They're going to Petoskey. They're going to Grand Rapids. And I don't even think people that travel between Grand Rapids and Detroit stop in Lansing. So in my head, I'm like, so there's an opportunity right there, right? We're the capital city of the state. And we're last on the list to be visited. So how do we make Lansing kind of the pinnacle of mid Michigan?
Did you see an article yesterday? It came, I had an article pop up saying that Lansing is one of the most least desired places to visit.
It is?
That's what I see.
My gosh.
To see if I can pull it up.
That's hilarious.
Yeah, I, I didn't read the article. It was like a headline. I was like, oh boy, that sounds rough.
But yeah, I mean, I, and I've thought of so many options too, right? I mean, now we're getting like that Dave and Buster's and everything, which is technically in Lansing township, but it's still bringing in, but we have Michigan State, we have basketball games. I don't know what would be stopping people from shopping or visiting Lansing.
Yeah, well, there's just not much here, right? Like the downtown portion of Lansing isn't like, it closes by five o'clock every day. There's nothing open. There's barely any restaurants down there. I mean, there's no like nightclubs. They're opening that one music venue or that one.
Oh yeah.
Yep. Yeah. So that'll be open soon, but um, here's the article. Lansing was just named the worst place to travel to this summer. As I am sitting here typing this in Lansing, I have to say ouch. I'm a little hurt. However, it should be noted that it has nothing to do with the beauty of the capital city, what the beauty of the capital city has to offer. Travel costs and hassles released its list of the best, this is super small for me to read. Places to travel in 2023, it ranked 100, it ranked 100 Michigan cities and towns. And if you live in the capital city, you should know Lansing ranked really bad in their ranking sheets. In their study, Wallet Hub evaluated travel costs and hassles and a boy, and boy, was it a stab in the gut to Michigan's capital city. We ranked at number 97 on the list out of 100. Holy cow.
That's terrible. That's actually hilarious that you found something like that. That's literally one of my key running points.
Yeah, I mean, it's crazy because there's not much here for anybody to do.
Right.
And it, it's, Michigan State is right here. One of the most like sought, sought after colleges.
Right. And I, you know, I don't get it. I really don't. Cause I know, I know what people are saying and you know, we're building more hotels and yeah, there's no Grand Opera House, anything like that. But you know, we've got we got the lug nuts, right? And now we got the soccer team as well. So
Well, there's a lot of things to do in Lansing if you know how to find them. Like, like if you're on the 517 and you can go through the calendar and whatnot, and you're into the community events, like then you could stay busy every single day doing something. But it's like, if you're not from Lansing, how do you find like, how do you find things that aren't like necessarily a part of the community?
Right.
Like things to do.
Cause like in my ward, like soup spoon, I don't know if you've ever eaten there.
Yes, it's amazing.
It is, right? So
And Nick's a cool guy, the guy who owns it.
And that's where a lot of the politicians go to eat for lunch.
Yeah.
And I mean, to me, if you were gonna visit Lansing, that would be probably one of my top things that you should do is go eat at Soup Spoon. So
Bodhi's is another one.
Bodhi's, yeah, very important.
My favorite restaurant.
So um, that's right on the main strip. And like you're saying though, nobody would know that unless you're from Lansing or you've been around here. So I don't know. I, I just, I think of other states and their capital cities and how we, we talk about them, like they're these, you know, hierarchical grandeur.
Right.
And uh, we're kind of just dust in the mud down here in Swamp Town. So
Yeah, it's like a fork in the road.
Yeah.
Between Grand Rapids and Detroit.
So I would, I would try to find possibly, you know, I was, I was thinking about like some sort of a maybe like a big truck stop, right? Or in a nice rest area that everyone would want to visit.
I have an idea.
Hit me.
I was just telling my wife this today. I was like, why doesn't Lansing? Cause we have all these food trucks, right? In Lansing, why don't we have a food truck park, like a park in Lansing that like, that would be close to downtown, close to East Lansing? To where you have like a pavilion, you have all these different hookups for all these trucks to park and hook up their stuff. Then you have like this grassy area where you could have like picnic tables and pavilion, maybe some playthings, like kind of like a farmer's market type setup.
That's not a bad idea.
It's a great idea.
Yeah, we were actually just in Dallas earlier this year, me and my fiance. And they had something similar to that. It's like this long strip of grass. And there were food tricks all down, up and down it and they had benches and nice water features and stuff. And it was just a place to be.
Yeah. I mean, if you think about like, especially because Lansing is kind of becoming like a foodie's place, like you have the Lansing shuffle. Have you been there?
I have not been there yet.
It's interesting. It's expensive, really expensive, but it's interesting. Like, cause it, it's kind of that concept, right? Like you go in there and they have like comment, like a common eating area, kind of like an airport or like a mall. And then you have all these different restaurants. And like it, I don't know, it's an experience, right? And that's kind of like what the food truck thing would be. It's like an experience. You go for the experience.
Yeah, that would be really easy too. You could call it like a food truck garden or something. It's a beer garden.
Right.
Come to Lansing, check out the food truck garden, different people every day.
Yeah, different people every day. You can, you know, you know that you could expect trucks to be there, you know, like if you work downtown or work at MSU. Yeah, different people every day. You can, you know, you know that you could expect trucks to be there, you know, like if you work downtown or work at MSU.
Yeah, we could go to the politicians and all that too, and as long as it's within walking distance, they'd go there, trust me.
Yeah.
Cause they get bored of eating the same stuff every day, so. I used to work with a guy that assisted a representative and he was like, we eat the same stuff every day. That was a long time ago. He told me that, but I'm sure it's.
I bet.
Sure it's true.
Yeah, I bet. Yeah, I know. I definitely think something like that needs to be done in Lansing. And then they're also opening up um the Makata. Um, and in the Naps Building.
Yep.
And that's gonna be the same kind of concept where the, like same thing as a shuffle pretty much.
Right, so that's not a bad idea. That should be the, maybe the route we go. And that's the thing, I mean, it, it seems like ever since we uh we took away like that whole pure Michigan thing for all of Michigan, um, a lot of our areas are struggling to kind of bring in tourists again. Um, we went to a wedding last uh August up in um Cadillac. Charlevoix.
Okay, that's a beautiful place.
It's great. Um, wasn't near as busy as you think it would be in August.
Really?
Yeah, and I was like looking around and I was thinking in the back of my head, I'm like, you know, it's, it's, it's Labor Day weekend.
Wow.
And I mean, there weren't lines out the door, the, there weren't, it wasn't like backed up traffic. I mean, it was pretty easily navigable and I was like, that's scary. I mean, that's one of our main.
True tourist areas, yeah. Um, what do you mean they took away the pure Michigan thing?
We don't put barely any money into pure Michigan anymore. I mean, when was the last time you saw a pure Michigan ad? So we don't, we don't.
Good point.
We don't advertise Michigan as a tourist place anymore.
Why not?
Uh, they just wanted to save money.
Really?
They cut that budget, yeah, or I don't know what it's actually called, um, but we'll just call it the tourist attraction budget. Um, they slashed it a handful of years ago, maybe five or six and I remember that because I was in at MSU and
Wow.
We were like, oh, that's kind of weird. I don't know why we would.
So have they lost significant amount of money in tourism since then?
I'd have to look at the books. I don't know the specifics, but I would assume so, yeah. I mean, I don't think Michigan is near as busy up north as it used to be when I would go up there.
Wow, that's crazy.
It's scary. I mean.
Yeah.
That was one of our main attractions, right? Is, that's one of our big moneymakers for the state.
So if you were to advertise Lansing as a tourist attraction, how would you do so?
It's a good question. Um, so the first thing in, in my head, just off the top, and I'm not the marketing man, right?
Right.
But um, capital city, right? So that needs to be embellished, like we are the capital city. This is where all the important stuff happens, right? And we do have interesting things. We've got museums, historical museums and all that. So um, it would say something about the capital city. I like the foodie idea, um. You know, we got MSU right down the road.
One thing that comes to mind for me, like when I think of like how to get businesses and people to come to Lansing to want to like spend the day, let's say they want to come for the day, like let's, you know, like if you wanted to go to Grand Rapids, like you might take your kids or family to like Craig's Cruisers for the day or something like that. Um, and I know like if you go to Chicago, you can buy like a city pass and it'll get you into like uh like the Willis Tower, it'll get you into the aquarium, into a couple museums, like and a bunch of, bunch of different things.
Right.
Like Lansing needs to offer something of that sort to where like somebody, like a family could come to Lansing for a weekend and maybe check out the museums, check out, like get a tour of like MSU or something, or get a tour of like a couple different museums. And then maybe, I don't know, like high caliber, like.
Yep.
A pass to high caliber or something.
No, I like that. Like a, a tour of MSU would be really cool.
Yeah.
And then we have um the Impressions Five Museum.
Yeah, that's a pretty cool museum too.
MSU Historical Museum. We have the actual Capitol because you can take tours of that.
Ari Olds.
Yep, Ari Olds, that's pretty. It's a pretty good one. I like that. I, I like it personally. I don't know how many people would want that, but um, you got the lug nuts. So you could do something with that. Um, and it seems like during the summer, we're doing really good now as a city of having something going on.
Right.
Almost every weekend, you know, whether it be Art Attack or uh just Five One Seven Fest, or we have the Film Festival twice a year now.
Right.
Um. Yeah, I mean, that's, I we, maybe the best option would be to pick kind of like a week or two weeks, um. Either late July, early August, something like that, and kind of have it as Lansing Tourist Week.
That's a good move.
And we, we have discounts across the board for the people, right?
Yeah.
Um, we have big events go on, um flea markets, art shows.
Right.
You could do it during the Film Festival if you wanted to. We just blanket everything and we go hard a couple of years for two weeks with all that. Try to start getting people to come here, see what it's like, um, and then see where it goes from there. That's not a bad idea.
Yeah, no, they used to have, um, there was like a day in Lansing where you could go to like all the different museums and everything and it was free, I believe. Yeah, I can't remember what it was called. Um. I wish I could remember, but I don't know if they do that anymore.
I haven't heard anything about it, no.
Yeah, it used to be able to like get on the cat bus and they would take you to all these different locations, like it was um the museum, the, the um, historical museum, like Ari Olds, uh Impressions Five, like all these all these different places you could go. The zoo was part of it.
Oh yeah, the zoo.
Yeah.
That's a big one too.
Yeah.
I mean, not a lot of cities, smaller cities have a zoo like that.
Right.
What I mean, I mean, Potter Park is not a big zoo, but they actually house some very significant animals um for the size of it.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
It's pretty cool.
It is cool. Yeah, I mean, I, there's definitely a lot of avenues we could take in Lansing um to make it touristy. It's just, how do you do that? And how do you get everybody on board?
Yeah, it's all about, um, it's all about the sale, right?
Yeah.
Um, there's a saying in retail, pretty sells, so uh make the city pretty and people will want to come, I think. And then the only, um, the only thing we'll have to do on top of that is sell it. But you, like I was talking about, you need money to do that, right?
Right.
So how do we like, and this is one of the important parts too. Old Town, everyone knows who lives in Lansing, where Old Town is, everyone knows the fish ladder, right? You know, you can go there and shop in the small shops, um. So it's baby steps. So how do we get like MSU students, right? That instead of walking downtown East Lansing, they all hop in the one guy's car that has a car, um, and they say, let's go to Old Town and hang out for the day, right?
Right.
Eat at Creole or something or meat.
Yeah.
Um, go shopping, hang out at the Fish Ladder Park. So I think that would be kind of the, the safe first step is to kind of draw business from these outlying areas.
Right.
And then we can expand from there.
Yeah, I mean, cause you have essentially the audience already right here. Like, how do you get them? Out of, out of East Lansing?
Yep.
That's a, that's a good thought.
Yeah.
It's a really good thought.
And I really, you know, that's one of my biggest, um draw, or not draws, but passion, I guess, is I, I want to help these small businesses. Um, I have actually, as part of my campaigning, one of the biggest things I've been doing is going to every small business personally and introducing myself to owners, managers, if the owner's not there, giving them my card, giving them my flyers, um. Cause Ward One has a majority of Michigan F, right? All the way up to the river. I have Frandor, I have Ryo Town, and I have Old Town.
Wow.
I have a significant amount.
Yeah.
Of the business structure of Lansing. So, um, I've, I feel like I've been getting overwhelming support. I went to um Old Town's. What do they call that? The Commercial Association Meeting.
Okay.
So they, they all paid dues, right? Um, and then they all got together and I went there and I heard their concerns. Um.
What were some of their concerns?
So right now it's actually parking. So down there, they have the new app Pay to Park.
Mm-hmm.
Which they had rolled out downtown first and then they spread it to that.
Old Town, yeah.
Yeah, and Old Town businesses used to have like Free Parking Friday, and I guess they took that away. And so now it's only free on Saturday and Sunday. And a lot of those business owners uh relayed to me that they feel like they've lost a lot of their business. Cause what happens is Lansing hires these parking attendants and then they assign them an area. So Old Town is just an area for that attendant. So pretty much all she's got to do is loop around like.
A block.
Pretty much, yeah. Uh, and she sees everything or whoever's behind it, so. People that are pulling in and, you know, running in to grab something really quick because maybe they had their bike worked down or um maybe they had a special order come in from Bradley's. They come back out and they've already got a fifteen dollar ticket. And some of these business owners feel so bad because they were only in there for five to ten minutes that they're actually like paying these customers fifteen dollars out of their own registers to try to make up for it.
Just so they can keep the business.
Yeah, I mean, they feel like they're losing forty-five percent of their business. They're actually going through a uh economic impact right now um, to see how they kind of measure against other areas, uh business areas in Lansing. So it'll be interesting to see what those numbers say. Um, that doesn't get done until I think the end of this month or next month.
I have a suggestion for the parking, because this is something that bothers me. Um, so I've gone downtown before, downtown Lansing. Paid for parking, went to QP's for lunch or whatever, and then came out, had to run to the courthouse and have to pay for parking again because it doesn't transfer over to a different spot.
Yeah.
Even though like I didn't use the whole time in that one, in that one spot, now I gotta pay for another parking spot for just a few more minutes. If there would be a way that you could transfer.
That time.
That time to a new spot, because you've already paid for it.
Right.
Would be awesome.
I think one of my biggest things is with that app that they use now, um, especially in Old Town, is there's that big parking, the Branky Fish uh ladder um lot. Is you pay for whatever time and you leave and then you go, whatever, you can add it from your phone. Um, but that takes away the power of the city to control it, right? So we're letting a third party practically do all of our parking.
Right.
And I'm sure we're paying some sort of a percentage. I mean, they're not doing it for free.
Right.
So why for like that lot, why not just put gates there? So the city claimed to those business owners that they were losing roughly seventy-five thousand dollars a year by having uh that Free Parking Friday, and that's why they took it away. Seventy-five thousand dollars and I'm looking and I'm like, well, where's that money going? Cause it ain't going in that lot and it ain't going in the roads at Old Town.
Right.
So I said, that's ridiculous. So why wouldn't we just put a gate in like what MSU does? Then we can give those, we can give the uh business owners vouchers and they can validate parking up to fifteen minutes.
Yeah, I mean, well, obviously that money's going towards salaries.
Right.
People, more people to drive around and charge tickets.
So. I don't know. It's not fair to make our small business owners uh feel ostracized.
Right.
You know what I mean? Uh, those should be the first people we protect, I think.
Absolutely.
Personally.
Yeah.
Um, and I've met so many of them now and every single one of them has been so genuine, so kind. Um, and they, they do want help. They really do. I mean, just me being there, listening was unheard of to them.
Really?
Yeah, they were, they were amazed that I was at that meeting, because they had actually invited Andy to it and he didn't show up.
Wow.
So they were like, oh, well, this guy's here and he's running.
He'll listen to our problems.
So, yeah. And that's what's crazy to me is, I mean, even as a mayor, right? It's not that difficult to to trench out that time for those people. Those are your constituents.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, I really do believe that even if I was elected president one day, I would tell my assistant, one day a week, I want to go to every single state, pick a town, pick a city, wherever, I'm just gonna walk around and talk to people. And I'm sure the Secret Service would hate me for it, but I mean, that's the whole thing, right?
Yeah.
I mean, JFK, back in the day, walked through West Virginia to, for the people that still didn't have telephones, barely had any kind of TV, radio, anything.
Yeah.
He walked through West Virginia and s- and said hi to everybody.
That's the thing, when somebody's elected into a position, they want to know that the person that they elected is going to be there for them and that the, it, that position didn't change who they were. Like, for instance, we always have um these positions that uh we for union members, um, you, union officials at our, at our work, always electing new, new people. But one of the biggest things that people complain about is that like when a shop chairman gets elected, we don't see him ever. He's always off in his little office doing nothing until election time. And then you see them coming around and talking to people and same with all these other positions. And it's like that in politics too. It's like people want to see the politician. They want to see the person they elected come out and talk to them, see that they're still a person that they're still for the people. It's super important.
It is. And I, I don't like making promises because you know what they say about politicians and promises, but it would definitely be one of my goals.
Right.
To, to.
I mean, once a week might be a little much, but you know, if you made, if you made an effort to
Right.
To go and talk to a local business owner or go into a restaurant while you're eating and talk to the people in the restaurant, like.
Exactly.
Just make an effort.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I, I'm fully on board with that and I really, I like to practice what I preach, so.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Um, is there anything else you want to talk about? Uh, actually, I want to ask you one more question.
Yeah.
Um, cause we're really, we've, we've only been going for forty-six minutes, so we're good. Um. Crime, like, I'm not sure how much a city council member and what they can do about the crime in Lansing. But crime is off the hook right now. It's become so, I mean, I don't know if you follow the Lansing uh Most Wanted page. But it seems like every single day, there's a shooting in Lansing, there's somebody dying, there's overdoses. So many different things.
So a quick funny story about the Lansing Most Wanted, it's run by a former Meyer detective.
Really?
It is, yeah.
Is that a good thing or a bad thing?
I don't care either way. I mean, I don't, I'm pretty sure they don't work for Meyer anymore. We don't know who exactly it is. We just know that at least that's the rumor, that it used to be a Meyer detective that worked at the South Penn store.
So I, I inter, or invited that guy, I'm assuming it's a guy, onto the podcast and he was like, I can't be on camera.
See?
And and I'm like, why not?
Maybe he works for Meyer.
I mean, it's possible. He was like, I just don't want to be, I don't want my face out there. He's like, I'll, it, I'll be interviewed, but it has to be audio only. I'm like, hmm, I'm not sure if I'm into that.
For all my Meyer people, right? We're getting down to the conspiracy. That's really why I came here, David.
Love it. I love it.
Um, crime, yeah, difficult topic, right?
Yeah.
Um, especially across the across everything. Um, so Lansing is slowly creeping up. Our number one crime statistic is assaults right now. Um, and unfortunately, the I think it's MSP that put that report together that I read, um, lumps domestic violence in with any assault, so. It's tough when you're looking at it to know exactly what was just me coming up to you in the street and punching you versus uh civil quarrel, so. Um, my thing is, um, fix the small things. And uh, I was I was, it was assumed that when I said that I was talking about um something called uh broken windows theory, which when I would thought about it, I, I won't say I was completely against what it, what it is and what it stands for and pretty much what it means is, you know, if you, if there's a broken window in a building, it's more likely that people will cause issues there. So if you fix the window and it looks nice, it's less likely.
Hmm.
Um, but the broken windows theory has a bunch of subsections and things that people have added to it that I don't believe in like stop and frisk and all this kind of stuff.
Okay.
So uh, the City Pulse basically said that by me saying fix the small things, I was talking about this.
Oh, boy.
And I just want people to know.
They're pretty extreme though, right?
Uh, yeah, but it's, I, I understand where he was coming from. I, if you read what I said, I saw what he saw.
I gotcha.
But that's not what I was saying, so I like to say that. But that's not what I was saying, so I like to say that just in general. Because I believe problems have a base, right? And the, the, the smallest ten percent of things is what we see, cause it seems like it's the biggest, right?
Right.
But it's the base that's cracked and those are all the small things and they slowly come up and come up and finally the pyramid just breaks, right? So um, I'm not saying fix every window, but cleaning up graffiti. Mowing lawns, holding everyone to the same exact standard, right? Accountability. Um, we passed a law in Lansing where they can't pull you over right now for expired registration, headlights being turned off or out, right? Uh, and they did that mostly for COVID, I believe.
Was it COVID or was it because of the whole George Floyd riots?
It could have been that too, but here's the deal. Um, we cannot ignore the small things to execute our normal duties. And I don't think any police officer would argue with me about saying that. We are intentionally ignoring small things in the city. Because we are claiming, well, we have so many big things, we need to focus on those. Is that how you fight a fire, David? Do you fight it from the top down?
At least once a week, I see a post from the Lansing Police Department that they pulled somebody over who's a felon, has a gun in the car, drugs in the vehicle, like. At least once a week.
Right. So you, you don't fight a fire from the top up, you have to shoot it at the base, right? So that's what I'm recommending and that's all I was saying. If we fix the small things, I think the big things will fix themselves. Once people see that we care, we care about retail fraud, we care about you not having your headlights on when you're driving at night. We care about you paying for your registration, because that's something that we just have to do. I know it stinks. I'm sorry. No one wants to pay a hundred and seventy dollars.
They really won't pull you over for that?
No.
Wow.
Yeah, so.
Wild.
Nobody wants to pay, no one wants to pay a hundred and seventy dollars for that. I understand that. I have struggled too. Uh, it's not like we all come from this like top-down level, right?
So what's the incentive then? That's the thing. Like if they're not gonna, if you're not gonna, if there's no punishment for doing the things that you're supposed to do. In order to legally drive a car, then what is the incentive? Why would I go get a registration?
Well, that's what I'm saying. We need to, we need to start enforcing it, because if you don't have the.
But, but why are people continuously following the law, though? If that's, if they're not gonna get in trouble for it, why am I buying my registration every year?
I don't know.
You know?
I mean, if you drive outside of Lansing, you could get busted. I mean, as soon as you go into Holt or something, they could stop you in a heartbeat, but. Um, yeah, in, within Lansing and East Lansing even too, really, I mean, they're kinda following that kind of policy. Because they just, they're concerned, they're, I've heard, I, I have friends that work in, from Sparrow. That now work in law enforcement, work at the Corrections Facility down there in Ingham County in Mason. Um, there's cops that say they won't pull you over if you're going eighty down the, down the road.
I've seen that.
Yeah.
I've seen that happen.
They're just.
Yeah.
Too afraid to do it. So, and it's not that they're afraid, as in like you're gonna pull a gun on them, they just don't want the hassle.
Right, right.
So I, I understand that and I will level with them as much as I can, but like I said. You cannot ignore our, our smallest tasks of the day, because it's just gonna continue to snowball. And then it's gonna be really bad.
Right. I mean, that's how you end up with like a lawless city.
Exactly.
It can be a problem. Wow, I did not know any of that. That is wild. I knew that they stopped pulling people over for taillights and um, things in the mirror.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I didn't know registration was a part of that. I didn't know it, speeding.
Yep.
I've seen people speed past the police officer and the police officer just sits there and I'm like, what is going on? Like I could've swore if that was me, I would've gotten pulled over.
Exactly. So it is pretty crazy to, to hear and I, I don't know if a lot of people do know that either, maybe they don't, maybe they do, but.
They do now.
I, I'm big on accountability, right? So as long as I treat, you know, as long as I hold myself, I hold you, I hold my fiancee, I hold my parents. If I hold everyone to the exact same standard, then I feel like I'm doing a pretty darn good job.
Yeah, I mean, that's all you can do and that's what you should do. So, uh, Michael, is there anything else you wanna talk about? Promote?
Uh, no, you can go to my website.
Okay.
It's through PolyEngine. You can always Google Lansing City Council Candidates and if you click on it, you can click on my website from there. Uh, you can find my Facebook, uh, Vote Michael Vanaguchi for Lansing City Council Ward One. Um, I think the uh, the, and maybe I could send it to you or something, you could like get in there, whatever, but.
Yeah, um, your website, your Facebook or your social media will all be in the show notes, so.
So.
So just go there.
And you can donate if you want.
Alright, cool. Awesome. Well, thanks for doing this. It was a pleasure.
I appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you.